How great are you Lord? How great is your mercy? How great are the things that you have done for me? How great are you Lord? Your loving kindness is filling my heart as I sing. How great are you Lord? How great is your love? How great is your love? It reaches to the heaven. How great is the heart that saw and blessed you be? How great are you Lord? How great is your mercy? How great are the things that you have done for me? How great are you Lord? Your loving kindness is filling my heart as I sing. How great are you Lord? How great is your love? It reaches to the heaven. How great is the heart that saw and blessed you be? How great are you Lord? How great is your mercy? How great are the things that you have done for me? How great are you Lord? Your loving kindness is filling my heart as I sing. How great are you Lord? Is filling my heart as I sing.
Facing the future without knowledge of your salvation, of knowing that, Lord, I was safe and secure in the master's hand. But, Lord, we do thank you therefore, Lord, for your love, for your mercy, for your grace, for your compassion, that, Lord, never failed. I thank you, Father God, for this eternal salvation that you've brought us into. Thank you, Father God, that it's by grace we are saved through faith. And that not of ourselves, it is the gift of God. Lord, none of us deserve it, Lord, all of us, Lord, have sinned and come short of the glory of God. Not a one of us, Lord, is worthy of all the good things that, Lord, you've done for us. But nevertheless, Lord, you've blessed us anyway. And, Lord, it says in your word that, Lord, you chose us in Christ from the foundation of the world. And, Lord, when the time came, you called us, Lord, and you drew us with the cords of your love, and you brought us to the Savior. And, Father God, you saved us, and, Lord, we're here this evening, Lord, rejoicing in our salvation. Father God, I thank you that no matter what is happening out there in the world, no matter what the circumstances are in our lives, Lord, you have us safe and secure in your hand where none can snatch us away. And, Father God, we just thank you and praise you for all your goodness to us. Lord, we thank you for our brother Igal, who has come amongst us this evening. Lord, we thank you for what you've done in his life. We thank you for the marvelous testimony he has of how you saved him, Lord, and how you've kept him over the years. Father God, I thank you that you've brought him into a ministry, you've given him a work to do, Lord, and he is seeing, Lord, the fruit of his labor, Lord, seeing people, men and women, being brought to a saving knowledge of Christ, lives turned around. And, Lord, we just thank you and praise you for what you are doing amongst those people there in Tel Aviv, Lord. And we thank you that throughout the world, Lord, you're still at work, Lord, rescuing men and women and boys and girls from sin and bringing them to the Savior. And so, Lord, we pray this evening that, Lord, as our brother speaks to us and shares with us from your word, we pray that, Lord, you will bless that message to our hearts. Lord, we pray that, Lord, we'll be encouraged as he shares stories and testimonies, that, Lord, we'll be encouraged to pray for the work of IMJP and to pray particularly for Igal and the work that he's involved in there in Tel Aviv. We pray that you put it on our hearts, Lord, to pray continually for them. And so, we commit this meeting to you. We just ask for your blessing, we ask for your presence amongst us. We pray that, Lord, everything that is done in this place this night will bring honor and glory to you. For we ask this in and through the precious name of your son, our Savior, the Lord Jesus. Amen. Amen. Praise the Lord. Well, good to see you and everyone in the Lord's house this evening. We give everyone a very warm welcome, as always, in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus. Welcome to the folks also, who've joined us on the livestream this evening. We're privileged to have our brother Igal with us and always enjoy Igal's ministry whenever he comes. And so, we're looking forward to hearing what Igal has to share with us later on. We're just going to sing another hymn now, a couple more songs before Igal comes. Here is love, vast as the ocean.
Here is love, vast as the ocean. Our greatness has been won. When the lakes are wide and ransom. Yet for all is precious blood. Will his love will not regret. Who can sing, who sings his praise? He can never be forgotten. You have bent his head and obeyed. From the hands of crucifixion. Ranting toll of the deep and wide. In the blood, gave some God's mercy. For the passing and gracious time. Grace and love, white night in their words. All incest and proverbs. Heaven's peace and repentance. Yes, I hear thee well beloved. Let me hold thy arm, accepting. Not the end of my days. Let this be thy kingdom only. And thy life be till thy days. And all shall be my glory. Come within, whose will I see? Love as friends and sanctified be. And thyself as sent me. And thy greatest standing is reaching. As I just give thee my own. Live and more. The waters so bright so. But after you. You have all, how my heart resigns and my heart. To worship you. You are all, love my strength, my shield. To you alone, make my spirit here. You have all, how my heart resigns and my heart. To worship you. I want you for the know. Of silver only you can satisfy. You are all, a good meal. Joy, comfort, and the heart. Oh, Lord, my heart. You are all, love my strength, my shield. To you alone, make my spirit here. You have all, how my heart resigns and my heart. To worship you. Oh, my friends, and you are. My covering, though you are a king. I love you more than any other, so much more than anything. You are all, love my strength, my shield. To you alone, make my spirit here. You have all, how my heart resigns and my heart. To worship you.
Praise is all in this. Let's take a seat, shall we? And just going to ask Igal if he'll come.
Good evening, everyone. So grateful to coming back here and see you all because you're my brother and sister in the Lord, amen? So before I start, I want to tell you shalom from my country, from my church, from the rehab house. And they really encourage that we have a family, brothers and sisters in the Lord, that are praying for us, praying for our ministry, and praying for what we do in Israel. So usually, when I was coming here, I usually was sharing with you stories and the testimonies and how God worked through me. But this time, I actually decided to preach, if I can, yes? And what I was preaching, you know, about what? I think this is a really important issue, a topic, that every Christian must to do it. And you know what? That we need to share the gospel with others, amen? I'm a missionary and praise God that God saved me from the life of sin, life of drugs, life of criminal work. And he gave me the call, go back to the streets where the people who are using drugs, prostitution, alcoholics, addicted people living, and take his light and give it to them and share with them about God, that actually he only one who can give them free, amen? So you probably know that, but the logo today in the world that it says, "I don't want to do nothing. I will have a lot of money and I don't want to be responsible for nothing," right? This is how the people living today, elders and youngers. And unfortunately, I see Christian people that have the same logo in their life. "I want to come to the church, but I don't want to do nothing in the church and I don't want to be responsible for nothing in the church." It's unfortunate, but this is the logo that many people use today. And this is the Christian life, how they think. But if you remember from the book of Isaiah, chapter six, when God cleaned Isaiah's lips, Isaiah have actually a different logo. You know, God cleaned his lips and God asked him, "Who shall I send and who will go for us?" And do you remember what Isaiah replied to him? "Here am I, send me," amen? He doesn't say, "I don't want to do nothing. You clean me, that's it, I'm free." No, he said to God, "Send me." Today, we will learn some verses from the scripture. And this is actually the verses that actually tell us how Jesus found his first missionary, how Jesus found the first person that actually went and shared the gospel with his people. We will speak today from the Gospel of Mark, chapter five, and the verses will be from one to twenty. And dear church, in this story, we actually can see three steps. Three steps that happened in the life of every person who believed in God, every person who meet God and Jesus. And I wanted to all together to try to understand how these verses can be applied to our lives. Because it's very important today, as we live, not only today, every day, that we read the word of God, we can see, understand how we can apply this to our life, amen? So the first step that I call him, I call them divine meeting. So please, let's open the Gospel of Mark, chapter five, verses one through five. Please open the Bible because my English in the scripture is not so good. I can read on Hebrew or Russian, but it will be hard for you to understand. "They came to the other side of the sea, to the country of the Gerasis, Geranases. And when Jesus had stopped out of the boat, immediately there met him out of the tombs a man and an unclear spirit. He lived among the tombs. And no one could beat him anymore, not even with a chain, with a chain. For he had often been bound with checkers and chains. But when scrawled the chains apart, and he broke the snackers in pieces. No one had the strength to die him. Ninety days among the tombs and on the mountains, he was always crying out and cutting himself with stones." If we will read chapters three and four, we can see that, chapter in the Gospel of Mark, we can see that Jesus actually arrived to the Galilee. He was preaching the word of the dead. Many of our people was followed after him. Part of them was following because they want to see his miracle. Part of them want to eat, and this is also normal. Part of them want to be healed, but not everyone want to be healed with him. He teach them by parables. And this is teaching us that actually through parables, he judge the Jewish people. Because when he stay along with his disciples, they actually explain to them what the parables means. And one day, in the chapter four, Jesus says to his disciples, "Let's go to the other side of the river." I can imagine that disciple was very happy. You know why? Because they were so busy every day, you know, give food to the people, serve them, be in the ministry. And now Jesus tell them, "Okay, let's go to the other side." So maybe for them it's a small location. And they're going through the sea, sea of Galilee, and they have, you remember what? A storm. What Jesus did? Come on, you read the Bible or not? He was sleeping like an angel, yeah? He was tired because he was 24/7, he was working, he was minister to the people. So he also was a person, right? So he need to rest, to have power, to continue to serve. And the disciples walk him and tell him, "Teacher, don't you care if he withdraw?" And what Jesus told them, you remember? Let's open, please, Mark four. Mark four, thirty-nine, forty-one. "And he awakened, rebuked to the wind, and said to the sea, 'Peace, be still.' And the wind said it, and there was a great, and was a great camp. He says to them, 'Why are you so afraid? Have you still no faith?' And they were filled with great fear, and said to one another, 'Who then is it? Who then is this, that heaven, the winds, and the sea obeyed him?' Amen. So what we can see, the disciples actually understand, not understand clearly, but they understand who Jesus was. There was a field. They stand on the field because they see a guy, a rabbi who was with them, stand up and say quiet to the wind, quiet to the sea, and everything calm. And there we are, just let's paint this picture in our head. You okay with the divination, right? If not, we try it again. So they come to the other side after the storm to this place, and this is the place that they know nothing about God. They actually was pagans over there. They actually coming in the morning, they tie up their boat, and they see a very scary picture. What the picture that I see? They see a man running to them and yelling, a man with bad spirits inside to him. I think that I can see their faces because nothing was not prepared to them to this picture. They actually was afraid, right? Everything was quiet, everything was cool. This man was living, it says in the tombs, but actually this was caves. And he was living by himself over there. So just think if a person who living in the caves by himself can be normal? I don't think so, right? So this is almost the same people that I meet on the streets in Tel Aviv, the people actually addicted. They also have bad spirits. You know, this is the spirits of addiction, they living on the street, and this is a very hard life because if you're strong enough, you can live on the street. If you're weak, the street will eat you. So this is actually survive. And it says also in verse four, that no one can behold on him. Just think about how many demons he have inside and how strong they are was because there was the chairs, everything that he would cut. This was very, very strong person. And probably he has many signs of his body. Why? Because it says in verse five, "Night and day among the tombs on the mountains, he was always crying out and cutting himself with stones." Why do you think he did it? I think that this person actually want to die, because the life that he was living. This is not alive actually. So he was cutting himself with the stones. So just imagine for you a picture, that you coming to the camp with your kids, you park your car, you take your suitcase, and suddenly, one guy like this running to your direction and yelling. What your response was? What will be? What the response will be? I think you will be running, sorry, running away from him, right? This is like the scary movie. And the question is, what happened to this person? Why he became so scary? Well, actually Marcos told us, because he was possessed man. And this was, not one demon was inside him. Why? Because when Jesus ask him, "What's your name?", what he answered to him? "Legion." And Legion, I was looking the Wikipedia, this is actually from the Roman army. It is containing 6,000 soldiers. So just imagine, in this person, he had 2,000 demons inside him. Why 2,000 demons? Because when Jesus set them free, 2,000 demons went to the pigs, and the pigs was, went to the sea and died. We don't know why this man became a possessed by the demons. The scripture don't teach in us. But what we can see, this actually man, that he was living, a living hell on the earth. He was cutting himself, he was crying out, he was beaten. And Jesus actually meet this person that experience the hell on the earth. When I speak about divine meeting, it's very important to emphasize that Jesus came to there. He and his disciples, only for meet this guy. This is divine meeting of God. Just, just think about it. Jesus don't share the gospel of the dead. Jesus don't give food to no one. He don't heal no one except this guy. So he leave everything, and he went to the other side of the river, to this guy. This is what, this is was his goal. So dear friends, Jesus is work with us personally, each one of us. Jesus came to meet us personally. You want to work in our life, you want that we have this divine meeting. Let's please open the Gospel of John, chapter 6. Maybe I can ask from someone to read, because my English is not so good. Who want to read the verses? The Gospel of John, you will, thank you. You see, this is the pastor, the spirit of the servant, always ready to serve people. Thank you. Gospel of John, chapter 6, verses 38 through 39. Gospel of John, chapter 6, 38-39.
"For I have come down from heaven, not to do my own will, but the will of him who sent me. This is the will of the Father who sent me; that of all he has given me, I should lose nothing, but should raise it up at the last day."
Amen? Just think about it, this is the will of our God. Alleluia! Alleluia! He love us so much, that he actually send his son, that he die for us. And what he want? That one day we will raise and be in his kingdom, amen? Just think about it, how God love us, and how Jesus want meet us personally, that he ready to leave everything, only that we will find him and our soul not be be lost, amen? So dear church, I wanted that we look ourselves. I don't think that we was living a life how this person that we read about him, right? Maybe I was, because I was drug addict, living in a criminal life. But I want to tell you, this is the life for every person without Jesus. This is a living hell on the earth. This is the life of spec for every person who not, who was not saved. You know, it's, it's very scary. Because who is not Jesus? Apostle Paul wrote in Ephesians. He says, "This is the person who live under the rural, rural, on the kingdom of the earth." And who is the kingdom of the earth? Our enemy, amen? Paul says that everyone who not believe in Christ, high and, live under his willow of the heaven. So like this, this person in our story, he was living by the willow of his demons that was living inside to him. And he was suffering, because he was cutting himself on the stones, and they actually want to die. This is not a life, you agree with me, right? Each one of us need divine meeting with God, amen? Amen? And I turn to you today, if you still don't have this meeting, pray, ask from Jesus that he will come to your life, because we need this meeting. When Jesus meet us like this, this person, he will change us, he will change our life. This person actually don't wait for Jesus, right? But Jesus know about him, as he know about us, as he know about people, sacred people that living over there. But this is our job to share the gospel with them, amen? I will tell you the truth, the people that outside, in the world, they will not come here to hear the word of God. They will not come here to see, seek after Jesus, like this person in our story, believe me. But this is our job, my job and your job, to share with them about Jesus, amen? This is can be your friends, your people that study with you, people that work with you, they never will come here. But only through you, they can hear about salvation. They can hear about Jesus. They can hear about what Jesus did for them 2,000, more than 2,000 years ago on the cross. So divine meeting, this is the first step, what happened. Bless you sister. This is what happened in the life of person who meet Christ. Now let's go to the second point, that I actually call it divine power. So let's back to the Gospel of Mark, chapter 5, and Brother Ian will read for us, verses 6 through 13.
"When he saw Jesus from afar, he ran and worshipped him; and he cried out with a loud voice and said, 'What have I to do with you, Jesus, son of the Most High God? I implore you by God, that you do not torment me;' for he said to him, 'Come out of the man, unclean spirit.' Then he asked him, 'What is your name?' And he answered, saying, 'My name is Legion, for we are many.' Also he begged him earnestly, that he would not send them out of the country. Now a large herd of swine was feeding there near the mountains; so all the demons begged him, saying, 'Send us to the swine, that we may enter them.' And at once Jesus gave them permission. Then the unclean spirits went out and entered the swine; there were about two thousand; and the herd ran violently down steep place into the sea, and drowned in the sea."
Amen? So as we read, this person saw Jesus from the distance, right? They just arrived to the beach, but he already see him when he was in the sea. And what he do? Actually running to him, fell down in his, and that's from him, "Don't torture me." So my question is, to where you are run for? For our logic, these people, actually they need run away from Jesus, right? But this person run to Jesus. And this is not the first case, that person that was with demons, not run away from Jesus, actually nailed above before him. If you will read from the Mark, chapter 1, we will see another person that was, this is Mark, chapter 1, verses 23-24. Can you read please?
"Now there was a man in the sin of God with an unclean spirit; and he cried out, saying, 'Let us alone; what have we to do with you, Jesus and Nazareth? Did you come to destroy us? I know who you are, the Holy One of God.' But Jesus rebuked him, saying, 'Be quiet and come out of him.' And when the unclean spirit had convulsed him, he cried out with a loud voice, and he came out of him."
Amen? So whereas you know that you already possessed man, that you have with the demons, again, according to our logic, this person will be sitting quiet, right? But the demons don't sit you quiet. They come to him, they, they, they know him. They know who he is. They actually says his name, the Son of God. What do you want from us? And you know, for demons, they have very good knowledge. They know everything. They know who is Jesus. They know what he can do. They know, they know that he has the eternity to do everything. And when they see him, they fell down on the knees. They call him by his name, the Son of God. They don't call him God, but they say, "Son of God", because they exactly know who Jesus was. In our story, they ask for Jesus, that actually don't send him for this area, right? So what do you think, I want to ask you, what do you think, what area are they talking about? For your opinion? The area that Jesus actually meet, meet them? No, they ask them, ask him, Jesus, that he will not send them from this world. This is their area so far. So far, this is their area, this is the area of Satan, because he is the king of this world. Eh, not the king, the ruler, sorry, not the king, king only one, the ruler of the world. They ask for him, that he will not send them to the hell, because they, they know they will be suffering over there. They know that only Jesus can send them to hell. And they know that one day, when Jesus will come, the second coming is soon, amen? So when he will come with his army for the last battle of war, he will send the Satan, the demons, all the soldiers of Satan, send them to the hell. But that day still not come. This is the reason why we must pray, read the Bible, and share the gospel. Because this day is very soon, brother and sister. If you look what happened today, if you look, not today, sorry. If you look what happened for the last year in the world, earthquake, the war in Ukraine, natural disasters, fires, flood. This is signs for us, that the second coming of Jesus here nearby, amen? We as a Christian, not only we, every Christian in the world, you must to live every day by knowledge that the day that Jesus will come is very soon. We must to be awake. Because in Book, in the Gospel of Luke, it says, "He will come like a thief on the night, that no one will prepare." If you sitting in your house, and you know that someone want to come to your house and steal your stuff from the house, you will be awake, right? Sitting with a knife or with a Kalashnikov, I don't know what you have. You will be prepared for the thief, right? But Jesus will don't tell you when he coming. He just said, this is the reason, you know, in the book of Revelation, the last chapter, he says four times over there, from different angles, "I am coming soon. I am coming soon." We must to be, we must to be awake. And this is a fact, brother and sister, that he will come, and he will beat the last, he will be, fight the last war with Satan and with the demons, and he will be, send them to the hell forever, amen? You remember the Book of Job, right? Satan said to God, "Well, of course he praise you, because you give them everything." So what God told him? "You can do whatever you want, but don't touch your soul." And when he came, sorry, when he came the second time, God tell him again, "You can do whatever you want, but don't touch his soul." Even the Satan obedient to God. Even his demons obedient to God. As we read here, the demons, they know who Jesus was. They still obeying to him. They could do nothing, decade cannot do nothing without his permission, amen? Nothing, believe me. If, if, if we are Christians and we was baptized, and the Holy Spirit living inside us, it's never can be that wrong spirit will come and live inside us. It is possible, right? Because the spirit of God is freedom, it's light. So how light and darkness, they cannot go together. So dear church, the Satan came only for steel, destroyed and killed, right? And look what the demons did to these pigs. They killed them. They killed them, because they went to the sea. Every person that meet Jesus, you meet with his trait. This is what we need, divine power of God, and divine meeting with God, it will change us. Just think, no power can deal with a human who was possessed. But as he was wrote, he was throwing the chairs, and broke the arrows on his, on his feet. And on the moment that he meet Jesus, what happened to him? Can you read please verse 15?
"Then they came to Jesus, and saw the one who was being deemed possessed, and had Legion, sitting in court with his right mind;
Alleluia! You can understand what Jesus can do. He was sitting, dressed, and he cleaned mind." Praise God. This is only the power of God, this is only the power of Jesus Christ, our Messiah, can change people, and he continue to do it with that today. Amen? You know, I work in Israel with Jewish people, because you know, we have a lot of Jewish people in Israel. But I work with special, with a special people. The people that actually was heard, from social worker, from prison, from their parents, they living on the streets. And to build the relationship with them, it's very hard. This is happening slowly, step by step, you know? We have a coffee shop in Tel Aviv, that we actually give them food and coffee and, all, all, food and coffee and tea. And the people coming over there, for many years I know them. You know, so I know the people, how they love drink dirty tea or coffee. I have one woman that she, we always give hot food from the gas, yeah? But she always love to put the food in the microwave for 17 seconds. Not 15, not 20. This is what she has, 17 seconds exactly. So I put, I put 20, 3, 3 seconds, I stop the microwave. And you know, for me, it's something simple. But for her, this is actually, I care about her. And why I care about her? Because the Holy Spirit living inside me. Because God love them. I, what I do, because God changed me how this person. I meet him, he changed me, he set me free from the, from the life that I was living. And he give me this call, to go back and share the gospel with these people. You know, I, God save me 2006. I married, well, it's good that my wife in London not here, I believe in 12 years. And only this year, God bless us with a child. I became a father 3 months ago for a son, praise God. We, me and my wife, we have married spiritual kids, many spiritual grandsons and granddaughters. But God was, I think he was preparing us, that he says, "Okay, now you're ready, finally." And he give us, "Your son." And you know, most of you are parents, right? Today, as a father, when I hold my son, I actually understand how much God love me, and how much he love us, you know? My son is small, and when he want something, he start to cry, you know? So want to eat, change the diapers, you know? Meh, meh, it's like a lot, a lot arm. It's work, from the beginning, he was every 3 hours, but now, a little bit less. So this is how God want us, that we always will come before him and ask him everything. Even the thing, the thing that, that we think that are stupid one. How many times during the day, we are start to solve our problems by ourselves? Many times, right? Or maybe, maybe only me, because you are holy one. You are a Christian, and I'm trying to fix by myself. And back then, I remember, oh, just a moment, I forgot to ask from the father. And the God, sitting of the day, you know? And he's laughing. Okay, continue to do, I'm waiting. Finally, he will come to me. But maybe when we was approached to him for the first time, he was already ready to help us. But his beloved father, that he look at us and he has a good sense of humor, right? Okay, you can continue, continue, I'm here. Finally, you will come to me. So this power change this guy, this power change me. And I know this power also will change you. We was dying in our sins. And the meeting with God, divine meeting with God, divine power of God, this is what changes us. And God actually, as we read from the Gospel of John, that you won't rise up with him together. So we see this guy that meet Jesus. He has divine meeting, right? This meeting with God, it's important, because in the Letters of Rome, it says, "No one seek after God." No one seek after God. But God want to meet us. God want to come where we are. Never mind what place we are. This is the reason why we must and need that God will find us. Amen? The Scripture teaching us that the faith, this is a gift from God. Amen? Only through this power and through this meeting, the person can change. And this is what happened in my life. And this is what happened in people that I serve with them. I see them. You know, for a small example, I have one guy in the house. I will not tell his name. But he was returned to Jesus almost one year and a half. He was, became strong in their faith. And by the grace of God, next month, he has a fiance from Netherlands. And next month, they will be married and will become one flesh. And you know, I did with them Bible study about the marriage and now to see that how God brought him together. She came from the Netherlands. He is from Israel, Russian speaker, a different culture, a different language. Well, both of them speak English, but still, this is not mother this is not mother language. But God make them together. It's a blessing. And one day, not one day, next month was God will, they will come and be one flesh. And this is a blessing to see how this guy was dying on the streets from the drugs. And God took him. You meet him, divine meeting. Divine power changed him. And one day, he will be a husband and one day, he will be a father. Amen? And this is only God can do. So let's go for the last point, and I call it divine mission. So Brother Ian, if you can, please read Mark 5, verses 14 to 17. 14 to 17. So the reaction of these people is very interesting, why? They come to see, they come to see what happened. They come and see Jesus. And they see this man, who was possessed man, sitting, dressed in the right mind. They hear the story what happened to this guy. They hear the story what happened to these pigs. And this became a scare. What Jesus did in their eyes, it was very scary. But what we do? Instead to ask for forgiveness from Jesus, because they understand this is God. I think they was understanding this is God. Instead to ask for forgiveness, what they ask? Leave this area. We don't want to see you anymore. Actually, they need to say the prayer of repentance, because they need that God will also set them free. They see the divine power of God, of Jesus, and this is bring them fear. This is exactly what happened to the disciples when we read in the chapter four, when Jesus said to the winds and the sea, "Be quiet." This is the same fear. And the fear is, this is normal, because they understand this is God. Jesus maybe was look for them as a normal person. But they understand this is not a normal person, because the people of the day, there was pagans. They understand they are sinner people. But they cannot be near Jesus. They ask for him to leave this place. And Jesus actually hear what they say. They coming to, he going to the boat. And the same person who was healed, the same person who was set free from the demons, you want to be with Jesus? You want to be with Jesus? This is what happened with us. And the moment that we came and meet Jesus and we have the first love, our first response was, "I want to be with you. I want to learn more about you. I want to be your disciple." You know, this is what happened to me. And the moment that God told me, "I forgive you, you my son", I was knelt down on my knees. I was a new believer. Well, I'm still new believer after many years. I don't know nothing. But I was addicted to drugs for eighteen years. And Jesus was set me free. So in the moment that he told me, "I forgive you, you my son", I was knelt down on my knees, I close my eyes, I told him, "You know what? Your drug is the best drug that ever used." Well, this was his grace. But for me, I was drug addict, I was using drugs for eighteen years. I told him, "Your drug is the best drug ever used. I don't need to steal, robbery people. I don't need to go to the drug dealer to buy some drugs, coming back home to use. I was back on the morning, I already on high." I want to be your servant. So since 2006, it's my privilege to be the child of God, to be his servant and to share the gospel with my people. So actually, this guy, he has the same reaction. He want to be with Jesus. But Jesus what tell him? "No. You cannot come with me. Go home and share how God was grace with your own people." Amen? This is a mission, brother and sister. Dear church, this is the first missionary that God, Jesus sent him to share the gospel with his own people. Before that, Jesus don't send, don't send no one. His disciples went after this case. This is the first person that said by Jesus to share what God, what God did in his life. And a person who was born again, obviously, he want to be with Jesus. Everyone, we was feel it, right? You want to learn about from him. You want to see him more, to be with him. But Jesus told him, "I'm sorry, but I have important mission for you. Go to your own people and share with them about God. To be my ambassador, that the place I can cannot go." Sorry. This is the reason why I told you that many people will not come to the church to hear the word of God. They will not to come to hear what the pastor were preaching. But this is our duty, our job, to take the gospel to them, to them. And we know that Jesus says that I came share the gospel to everyone. But in this land, when he was, the people don't want to accept him. This is the reason why Jesus meet this guy, set him free from the demons and send him to be first missionary. So Pastor Ian, can you please read verse 20? Amen? Jesus know that no one will be accept him in this area, because the people, when they saw what he did with this man, when they see what he did with these pigs, the people was afraid for him. So Jesus said, "This guy", he share the gospel with them, right? He share about Jesus. And this is guy, the question what I had, did he have a fruit from the outreach, yeah? How we call it today, outreach, yeah? So did he have a fruit from the outreach? So you know, the Bible have all the answers to our questions, amen? So what I did, I was continuing to read. And in chapter seven, I saw that Jesus coming back to this area. And in the chapter eight, Brother Ian, can you please read chapter eight, verse one? Amen? During the days, another large grow guttered. Who the people was, what do you think? This is the fruit, fruits from the outreach that possessed man share the gospel. Alleluia. I want to encourage you, brother and sisters, dear church, my below ones. Someone, sometimes we can see the fruits of our outreach. But sometimes we cannot see. But this is not our duty to see or not. Our duty to go and tell. And our fruits, believe me, one day, we will meet them in the kingdom. Amen? Because one day, we will stand before God. And we will give him, it's very hard for me for that life, accountability, right? We will give God what we did in our life. And he told us, "Go and share the gospel. Make disciples for me." So we must to share the gospel like this guy. And one day, we will see our fruits from the... If Jesus will be here on the earth, if not, in the sky. Because we never can know when the person will say the prayer of repentance. But it's very important that every person will hear about Jesus, will hear what Jesus did on the cross. Amen? This guy actually, that he went, share the gospel with his own people, he never finish Bible college. He never read this Old Testament, right? He never knew nothing about Jewish nation, that they are Jewish people of God. They doesn't know nothing. How long he was with Jesus? One, two, three hours? Five hours? We don't exactly, we don't know. But he went without education, without Bible, without nothing, only with his testimony. He left to his village and share the gospel with the people. So don't think that you need to be smart to share the gospel. Or you need to know verses from the Bible to share the gospel. Well, it's important that we will know the verses from the Bible. But we need to be simple. Because our God is a simple God, amen? We cannot put him in the square and put him on the wall as a picture, right? So we need to, we need to be very smart to share the gospel. Each one of us, we have his testimony. And we know how God work in our life and what he do, what miracles he doing in our life. So please, I want to encourage you to go and share the gospel. You remember that logo what I spoke with you from the beginning? Don't be people like this, you know? "I have the redemption, God save me, but I don't want to do nothing. I don't want to be responsible for nothing. I don't know, I don't want to do nothing in the church." If you really meet Jesus, divine meeting, if you really feel divine power of him, you must to go and share what he told you. Go home to your own people and tell them. Amen? I want to encourage you with this story. This crazy person, yeah, well, possessed man, but this is crazy man, yeah, we can say today. Crazy man that no one want to know him. No one want to be in touch with him. People was afraid for him. But after he met Jesus, he went and shared the gospel. And we also saw the fruit of his work. He was the first missionary. So please, let's also take the gospel to our people to share the gospel with them, because we know that we are living in the last days. Maybe Jesus will come today, tomorrow. Maybe our kids will meet him, maybe our grandsons will meet him, we don't know. But through the signs, what happened today in the world, we know this is very soon. You know, some people, when I spoke with them, "Oh, Jesus said about this in the Revelation, revelation, "I'm coming soon, I'm coming soon, but this is almost 2,000 years. He still not here." Okay, but the people forget that God create the time. God create us. God know that we are living the time, but God living outside the time. His soon, this is not our soon, right? We know that soon, we will go to bed, to rest, right? This is for sure, everyone will go, because it's almost, well, it's always, almost night. But his soon, we never can know, because one day of his, this is thousand years for us. But he wrote in the Book of Gospel of Luke, "When you see the signs, you must to be awake, because this is when I will come. And as I told you, he will come like a thief, that no one will be prepared for him." So please, be prepared. And I hope that you will be prepared. And I hope that I will be prepared when he will come to take his bride. Amen? Okay, so before we, we will move to questions and then answers, if you have, of course. If not, we'll close the door and we'll say here in the morning, "Maybe Jesus will come and take us." So on this table, I put, I was here already many times, well, not many times, maybe four or five times. And I hope the Pastor Ian will continue to invite me. If I was good, maybe I was crazy guy and he tell me, "Praise God that he left and praise God..." Well, you need to go to the office and invite me, you know how it works. So I put here my testimony, I put here my last prayer letter. I also put here the newsletter for my ministry, international ministry to Jewish people. You can take, read and see how God continue to work with the Jewish people. He never stop to work with them, because the gospel came to the Jew and she must go back to the Jew. Amen? And also, I have here this card. And this is card, that program that called "Watchman". And this is words from the Book of Ezekiel. And it says, "Son of God, I have made you a watchman for the people of Israel." So here's the word I speak, then give them a warning from me. Amen? I want to encourage you to be my partnership in my ministry. And you can do it through your prayers. Remember, prayers are free, right? You didn't need to pay. I don't need to pay you, you don't need to pay to me. It's free. But you really need to know about what to pray, right? Right? So if you will sign this, this form and tick the box here on the front and give me this, after the service, you will receive one time in three months. This is not a lot of mails. But you will see a prayer letter from me. And you can see here real faces. Read, read a real story about people and how God changed them, how God work in their life. And please, continue to pray. Because you know, not everyone can go to the streets that I go. Many are people, I think, afraid to go to the streets like this. But I need your prayers, because this is my support, you know? Because your prayers, because prayers of the other Christian people, the body of Christ in Israel is growing. More churches are open, more people coming to Christ. And this is only because your prayers. And please also pray for your country. It's very important also.